Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 28, 2019, 7:04. We're here in the City Council chambers, and we will begin with a moment of silent prayer or meditation. We will rise for that. That will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Don Holtz. Please rise.
Place your hand over your heart if you're there for me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz?
Here.
Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hockes?
Here.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Here. Commissioner Hing is not here. It's an excused absence, so we will carry on. Next item is approval of minutes for our regular meeting of May 14, 2019. Any commissioner have any changes they would like to make to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be approved as presented. Next is oral communications. This is the time on the agenda when any member of the public may bring a matter to the attention of the commission. That falls within our purview. Usually that is non-agenda items. I have no cards other than for agenda items. So does anyone wish to address us on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we will move right along. We will move to the consent calendar. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, there's one item on the consent calendar tonight. It's an extension request for a tentative parcel map in variance. It was approved in February of 2017 by the Planning Commission. There was a lawsuit that occurred soon after that was approved, and that lawsuit was removed, and so they're ready to go forward at this point. He's able to go forward at this point, but it did maybe slow him down a bit in moving forward with recording the map. You'll note that in the staff report, there are findings. One of the things we did about a year or so ago when we adopted several changes to the processing was put in findings for extensions. So we think that it meets all the findings, and so those are before you tonight. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion by Holtz. Second by Kennedy. Roll call.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Very good, thank you. Next, we have the first of our public hearings tonight, item number three, which is an administrative use permit, number 19-02 categorical exemption, and the applicant is Arthur Fong at 2412 West Cedarwood Street. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, we're asking for that to be continued until the meeting of June 11, 2019, because it was determined that that was a conditional use permit, not a administrative use permit, so we're noticing it for the June 11 meeting.
Do we need a motion on that, or?
Yeah, motion second be good.
Okay. Motion by Kennedy.
I'll second.
Second by Hockes. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
4-0. Yeah, 4-0. Thank you. Moving right along, folks. Next item is item number four, a conditional use permit, number 19-04 administrative review, number 19-02 categorical exemption. Applicant Kevin Gilbert at 2630 East Workman Avenue, number 315B. Mr. Anderson, I believe I see who's giving the staff report.
Yes, our planning assistant, Renee Aguilar, will be giving that report.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow Planning Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting conditional use permit number 1904. Subject property is located at 2630 East Workman Avenue within the Eastland Center and is zoned as regional commercial. The tenant's base formerly occupied by Albertson's Grocery Store. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the 24-hour operation of an athletic club/gymnasium known as Planet Fitness. The project is categorically exempt. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan. Behind me is an aerial map illustrating where the site is located within the Eastland Center. As you can see, it's on the corner of North Citrus Avenue and East Workman Avenue. Here is a site map. As you can see, Albertson's once consisted of about 50,000 square feet. What Planet Fitness is doing is they're occupying about 20,000, with Sprouts Farmers Market occupying about 30,000 square feet. Planet Fitness has over 40 locations in Southern California. The gym will operate with 20 to 25 employees, two to six per shift, and that includes a supervisor. Planet Fitness will feature cardiovascular and strength training equipment, showers in locker rooms, hydro massage beds, lounge chairs, massage chairs, and beauty-enhanced Eastland Center has 3,690 parking spaces. The proposed gym would require 199 parking spaces based on total square footage. After the use goes into the Eastland Shopping Center, we'd have a parking surplus of 313 Behind me, you see the floor plan. As you can see there, let me show you really quick. We have the entrance here and the front desk. Shortly after, we have a massage and beauty space that occupies a 10% required through the municipal code for accessory massage. And then we have restrooms and showers, exercise area, with a designated 30-minute training space within the gym. Behind me, we have a rendering of what the finished elevation would look like. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit 19-04. That concludes my presentation for tonight. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. I just want to clarify one thing, because there was reporting done in the newspaper that when it talked about the square footage of the Planet Fitness, it referred to it as taking 50 percent, or half of the space, which obviously is, you know, when I looked at the drawings, obviously the Sprouts are going to be 30,000, and the Planet Fitness is almost 20, so it's 50,000, so it's not quite half. So, just for clarification.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Nope?
I have.
Oh, we have a question. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah. My issue is the parking. I know you see there's 3,600 parking stalls, so that's for the both north and south side of the Eastland Mall. So what about that little, it's like squared off in there? And with Sprouts going in, there ain't going to be no parking. That's a concern I'm going to have. I guess everything to the east of that, if they want to walk, but I'm thinking about the elderly people. So I would like to know how many parking stalls are in that little, where the old Albertson's Thank you.
Yep, that's a number we can work on.
You might want to hear from the public before you start any conversations, but we can look at that and see if we can come up with a number.
Any other questions of staff? Nope? All right. Mr. Gilbert, please come forward and tell us all about your project.
Thank you for having me today. Great job of what we're looking for. If we do have questions regarding parking, we can definitely go through those numbers and work with the planning office. We are in building plan check right now, and if we need to revise anything, we can go ahead and do that second round of comments and adjust parking as necessary. As far as that, Renee went over everything that we're looking to do. Our square footage is approximately 20,000 square feet, and we should, according to our parking study done by our engineers, have a surplus of parking within that area. Other than that, I don't have any more, anything else to follow up with. If you guys have any questions, I'll try to do my best to answer them. I work with Burnham Nationwide. It's a permit expediter, and Planet Fitness is our client, so we do all the permitting and so forth. So any kind of logistical questions and so forth, like that operations and so forth, I can most definitely take note and confirm thereafter with you guys.
Are most of them, are all of them 24-hour operations?
Correct, yes.
Really? Okay. I didn't realize that. And they're, this is a franchise operation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how many franchisees does this franchisee have, do we know?
This franchisee, I couldn't tell you the exact number, but personally, I'm working on about four others within the general area myself. I mean, Planet Fitness doesn't just hire us to do all the permitting and so forth. We're just one of many, I'm sure, but this is one of our projects, so.
Okay. Commissioner Holtz?
Are you familiar with the letter from, I think they signed it, it's from MLM Group, West Covina?
Yeah, our letter of interest or intent.
I think there's a page missing, because on the very bottom, it says hydro massage beds, lounge chairs, massage through the use of a heat and water. Specifications for the equipment are attached, and there's nothing attached.
If that is missing, I can most definitely provide that to Renee. My apologies for that.
Do you know how they work, the massage beds and lounge chairs?
I couldn't speak to that myself. No.
Okay.
My apologies.
I'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and then up above it says group exercise rooms, pools, and saunas. What are they, small pools or one big pool? I don't think it's a big pool.
Well, in the first paragraph, about the last sentence, if there's any kind of miscommunication and so forth there, we'll definitely address that, but it says group exercise rooms, pools, and saunas are not part of the Planet Fitness model. There is a part of an exercise room that we located on the bottom left of the site plan, floor plan, that has some basically green lights, red lights, telling you when to transition from one station to another.
Okay.
But pools and saunas will not be a part of this model.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions while the gentleman's there? Yes, Commissioner Hockes?
This might as well, might just as well also be a question for staff if necessary. I'm wondering about, you know, with the type of clientele that will come to Planet Fitness, we might expect, you know, any number of people who are elderly seniors, ability challenged, and how the ADA, you know, access was reviewed for, you know, providing for ADA parking spaces. Looks like, you know, on this plan, that there's two spaces provided, you know, adjacent to, you know, to this where this is proposed. Was that reviewed and that determined to be adequate?
Most likely that hasn't been reviewed. I'm not sure if they've spoken with the building department, because this hasn't been formally submitted a building, because it goes through this process first.
Okay.
So, but they could have talked to them, but the building will look at how many are required based on entrances and square footage.
Yeah, we're going to abide by city co-regulation and so forth, provide anything that's necessary as far as ADA requirements, and most definitely at least the minimum requirement for that. Mr. Anderson's correct, we are in building plan check right now, and if for any reason that we don't follow any kind of ADA rules or so forth, then we're going to go ahead and fix that before permit issuance.
That's it? Okay. No other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Staff have any, oops, there goes staff. Staff have any comment on this before we?
Commissioner Kennedy had asked for the count of parking spaces.
Thank you.
Yes. So, tried doing this this way. Those two parking spaces we're seeing here, there's a little number there, and that counts for the amount of parking, as well as here and down there. So, starting at the top, we have 22 parking spaces there, 30 there, 30 there as well, and then 28 here. So within this area here, there's 108 parking spaces, and eight of those would be handicap.
The reason why I ask is because, like, if you go over to 24 Hour Fitness on Azusa and Workman, and you got State of Brothers next door, and when you go there, it's constantly full, which is a good thing, and it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. My only concern is if there's not enough parking, it's for the elderly, because if they're going to be going to the supermarket there, I don't want, you know, I know that everything east, there's got to be 1,500, 2,000 more parking stalls all the way up to Baranca. I understand that, but my only concern was elderly. And then if they meet everything, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Which, you recall what, where the doors to Sprouts are facing?
They are facing south.
So, that's one thing. It kind of helps the situation, because the doors to Planet Fitness will be facing off into the east, and the Sprouts will be facing south, so that helps a little. Now, I'm not, I'm not here to say there's never going to be a parking problem there, because in my experience with gyms, there's almost always a parking problem, especially after, when they first open. Usually it dies down a little bit after that, but as you stated, you know, sometimes people think parking's a problem, but it's not as much, it's not as big a problem as if there's no cars in the parking lot. That's the big problem. So it's part of the sort of balance that has to be made by the city on what uses are appropriate where.
Commissioner Kennedy, may I add that Planet Fitness is not proposing any group exercise classrooms, such as 24 Hour Fitness or Elite Fitness, where you have a rush of about 30 to 40 people at 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM trying to make a class. Therefore, I think that may ease the parking demand.
I was just asking, because, you know, I just want to know what it was by, what our code was, for how many? And I'm, you know, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, let me just say a couple things. Renee, that's a very good point about the lack of group exercises, because if you go to a gym, 24 Hour, any of these other ones, if you go there at the wrong time, and you just want to go in there and, you know, do your individual workout, and you've gone there when there's a group, all the parking spaces is gone. And if you wait like a half an hour or 45 minutes, and you go back, when those groups are done, you've got the place to yourself. So the fact that they don't have that is really good for the parking issue. And the other thing on the parking, you know, this tenant or this applicant, they really have no control. I mean, their job is to meet the guidelines, and even with the gym, there still is, I mean, you know, it's localized, it's always the localized issue that's the problem, but there's still going to be a surplus of parking. It'll be less than it is currently, once the gym use goes in, but it's still going to be a surplus. So, you know, that's all they can do is meet the code. And any other discussion on the item? Then would anyone like to make a motion? Anything else? Jeff, you want to comment on that?
No, just I'll read the resolution numbers. It would be 19-5987, and you'd be approving a conditional use permit, and the administrative review, which allows for up to 10% of the floor area to be used for massage.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Holtz.
I'll second that.
Second by Kennedy. Any further discussion? Nope. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Welcome to West Covina. We're very happy to have you, and we look forward to many years of a successful operation over there and revitalization of that area. Thank you very much. Jeff, I have a quick, just a process question here. I know that's on the agenda about the 10-day appeal period. Is that something that still needs to be stated, or is it covered?
You can state it if you'd like. There's no harm in it. I know it's totally required, because it's on the agenda and it's part of the code, but just for knowledge, it's not a bad idea to say.
Okay, all right. This action is final, and let's appeal to the City Council within 10 days. Now we did it. Thank you. All right. Next item is item number five, which is a conditional use permit, number 19-05 administrative review, number 1901 categorical exemption. The applicant self-made training facility at 1705 West Garvey Avenue North. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting that one?
Camilia Martinez, our planning assistant, will be presenting this.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'll be presenting CUP 1905 and administrative review 1901 for self-made training facility. This is an aerial of the subject's site. It's located at 1705 West Garvey Avenue North. The applicant is a self-made training facility, and it's in the zone of service commercial. The total building area of this lot is 37,696 square feet, and the tenant's space for the applicant will be 4,791 square feet. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit and an administrative review to allow the use of an indoor training facility with an accessory massage. The applicant applied for administrative review because they're planning on having a massage within the facility, and according to our municipal code, massage use cannot exceed 10% of the total business floor area without the planning director's approval. Self-made training facility was created to allow trainers and coaches to fully embrace their respective styles without being micromanaged and forced into a mold which they were never intended to fit. They allow their trainers to run their own businesses, and the facility is filled with commercial-grade exercise equipment that covers all areas of training so that each trainer can utilize their respective specialties. Once again, the proposed facility is 4,791 square feet. It has a small second-floor mezzanine that contains equipment that's also available on the first floor. It has two restrooms, a drinking fountain, and a space for the massage use. According to our municipal code, under athletic clubs and gymnasiums for the SC zone, it requires a conditional use permit, and that's why it's being presented before you today. For the floor plan, highlighted in yellow, are the two entrances for the facility. It's kind of difficult to see, it's kind of green on the screen, sorry. The dot on the corner is the drinking fountain. The green highlighted is the two restrooms. The purple is the recovery room where the massage usually will be held. And then on top of that is the second-floor mezzanine area. And once again, the equipment that's on the mezzanine will be also duplicated on the first floor. For the hours' operation, it will be open Sunday through Saturday from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and on their most occupied day, there will be a maximum of 30 people, including trainers and clients, at one period of time. For parking, the subject's site is a commercial center, and it's currently substandard for parking requirements for retail. If a retail store were to be in that unit, it would require 19 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing a gym use, and then on top of that, with the limit of the 30 people at one period of time, it would require 15 parking spaces. With that proposed parking, it would be more than what's required for retail. It was noticed by, in the Tribune, and also mailed to occupants and property owners, and there was 120 mailings sent out. For SEQA, it's considered to be categorically exempt under Class 1 of existing facilities and Class 3 of new construction or conversion of small structures. Oops. One second. And for staff recommendation, staff recommends that Planning Commission approves conditional use permit 1905 and administrative review 1901. The applicant is here, if you have any questions for them, and I'll happy to answer any of yours as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff? If not, I have a question. Kind of, I understand the entrance in the front, you know, the one that's on the angle, but what is the purpose of the other entrance, just a few feet away from it, the double-door entrance that's there? Is that for fire, or why is there an entrance so close to the other entrance?
So you're talking to, kind of?
The double doors, I know the entrance in the front, but then you have the double doors, you know, not that far away from it.
Right, you're here?
Yeah.
These are the current entrances of the previous tenant?
Yeah.
Um.
I know they're there now, and they're kind of...
I have a better question for the applicant.
Yeah, okay, I just, okay, yeah, that's fine.
They're not required. I think that may be the answer.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Mr. Johnson, would you like to come forward and?
So would you like to address the entrance?
Sure, please, thank you.
Yeah, so basically, again, like you stated, that it's an existing door, and basically, it's only primarily going to be used for emergency exit. So the primary entrance will be the one on the corner, which diagonally. So that particular one, the, not planning, the building requires us to have crash bars on it, so that is currently being installed as we speak.
Okay, so it won't be used to come and go just normally? It'll just be a crash out?
Yeah, exactly. So that front doors is the primary entrance for the facility, correct?
Okay, good, good, because I was kind of wondering about that. And go ahead and make your...
Well, basically, self-made training is a gym that basically, it's a private fitness studio, by appointment only. So as you can see, we're going to have a minimal amount of people because of that business model. Unlike most gyms, it's, you know, 150, 150 people at one, like you commented earlier. With this, it's by appointment only, private trainer and a client, so we're able to kind of control the flow of business throughout the day.
And tell me a little bit about the retail.
Basically, retail is just basic supplements, shirts, hats, you know, sweatshirts, that type of stuff. It's very small wall. We've got to make like a 10 to 12-foot area that's on the wall for retail stuff, so.
So the city has a crack at some sales tax, then?
You got it.
In that area there, okay. Any questions of the gentleman?
I have the same question. Parking. Is sit-and-sleep, or the mattress store still there, or did they go out of business? Or are you guys cutting it up? Because the paint stores are on the other side, and Leo's Auto Care is on the backside of that.
Yeah, so, I mean, so as far as our business hours, so our busiest times are from the morning till about 10 o'clock, and then it kind of dies down throughout the day, and then again, it picks up in the evening. So the business hours of the auto place, the sit-and-sleep... So, uh, the business hours of the auto place, the sit and sleep and even the Sherwin-Williams, sit and sleep, I believe, opens up at ten o'clock. So by the time they're opening for business, we're kind of dying down. So that's kind of a, you know, one of the nice things about that part of it.
It's not like it's crowded over there.
It's not like it's crowded over there anyway, okay.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, they're, you know, they're actually, I've met the owners.
I remember when it was the DMV, I grew up around the corner, I know the area well, yes.
They're actually embracing us, I mean, their, their business have had, has had an uptick since we've been there as far as the chatter and whatnot, so they're pretty pleased that we're coming in and gonna fill up some of their spaces as far as their parking and whatnot, so. And I'm one of their customers now too, so they're pretty happy about it.
Commissioner Hockes.
My question is, uh, I didn't see, um, in the presentation or staff report, any mention of if, of the number of employees that will be on site?
So, again, so basically, we have no employees per se. We basically, our, our business model is we have a facility, it's kind of like a salon barber shop, uh, model where we're providing their equipment, the facility, uh, and basically, a trainer pays us rent to, to bring his clients there. So in a sense, he's running his own business. As, uh, Camelia stated earlier, we're allowing these trainers to kind of expand and, and build their own, uh, businesses with one-on-one training. So as far as employees, we have none. There are no employees.
How is the retail operation then handled?
Well, so basically, the retail basically is, is we have a lead trainer there that's basically, we have two owners, myself and my partner, Jason. Basically, you know, if you want to buy a hat, we have it there, you know, we do the transaction. But it's, it's very low volume. Like I said, it's just hats, shirts and, you know, sweatbands if, if on that part of it.
So either you or your partner then be, uh, usually present?
Yes, yes.
At any?
Full-time.
Full-time?
Right.
Commissioner Holtz, any questions? Clarification, does somebody have to have a trainer there with them?
Yes.
You do?
Yes, you, again, it's by appointment only. You can't, you know, if somebody comes in off the street and they want to work out there, basically, our lead trainer or myself or my partner would basically go through and have a consultation, figure out, you know, different types of training that, that they may need, the requirements, and then fit them to the appropriate trainer. Because we have specialties in the types of trainers that we have. So we would fit them to that, make the match, and then basically, it's up to the trainer and the client to go over schedules and times. And most sessions are fifty minutes for the most part.
If somebody has their own trainer already, can they bring that trainer?
No. Basically, we go through the process of, uh, of the applicants and trainers. So we decide if it's, if they're a good fit for the group of trainers that we have.
No, I have a question. I noticed that there are no showers.
No.
Why is that?
It's part, I don't fully understand, but basically, uh, it's part of the franchise things. They don't want, uh, the showers, the, the massage areas is actually an open forum area. We don't have any locked doors anywhere. So it's pretty much an open platform of what we have. So we do showers, we've got to lock rooms, we're gonna need more space. Just more room for mischief or who knows, you know? But that's just their, uh, their rules on it as a franchise.
And a typical training session is up to the individual?
About fifty, excuse me?
Is up to the individual trainer and the client or?
Yeah, so basically, the, the trainer and the client, they decide, you know, if it's twice a week, once a week, three times a week. But every session is for fif, a fifty-minute session. Fifty minutes. Five-oh, yeah.
Any other questions of the gentleman? Nope. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, you want to be heard on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
How you doing, counsel? So I will probably be the one that's in there most of the time and I'm kind of the one that operates it. There's really not too much to operate because every trainer does work on their own, um, schedule. So for me, I'm just really facilitating the retail, um, cleaning up, making sure if I lose a trainer, I'm interviewing new trainers, but really, we, we look for trainers that are, um, coming from either a corporate gym or probably the ones that train in the park that have a big clientele base, but they just don't have a place to take them. And like you said, we don't have group classes, so that's one of the big reasons why self-mades do so well is because of the fact that it's accessible to whoever pays for the trainer. So a lot of trainers get stuck with a client, they try to take them through a workout, but then the gym's crowded with, like you said, like group classes and so they don't really get the full benefit of the workout. So it allows us to have the trainer do an affordable session that helps the client and also helps the trainer at the same time.
You know, I've been to, I go to Twenty-four Hour Fitness, not enough, but I, I do go there. And I see where sometimes a, a trainer that is not one of their trainers will, you know, work with a, one of their clients in their facility, I don't think they like that.
No, so the fact that you notice is pretty, it's a pretty, it's a, it's a big learning issue that's been going on. I've been in the fitness industry for ten years, so I used to be a district for Bali Total Fitness, I don't know if you guys remember that. So it was always a constant issue of us trying to cat and mouse, trying to get these trainers off our workout floor for our own private trainers, but it's, it's, it's almost impossible to do that. So what we do is we open this facility that gives the outlet to the trainers that don't want to be confined to a twenty-four hour and get paid twelve dollars an hour while the, while the gym makes eighty percent. So it allows them to do a reasonable price for the client and also the trainer to make a reasonable living.
And, you know, this is, this is a, a unique business concept, I think. Is, do you have any competition? I've never heard of this, other than you.
Um, competition-wise, I would say any really mom-and-pop place, this is actually really common. A lot of places do rent out. So there's a couple, I guess if you want to call them competition, gyms that are open, but what they cater towards is boot camp. So if you're my client, they'll do a boot camp. And then they'll, they'll rent the space out in between their boot camps to make so like, um, uh, what's the boot camp? Fit Body Boot Camp does that, a couple other places around here where we're strictly a client and a trainer. So a trainer could go in there with their client and be, have the gym completely to themselves.
Gotcha. Any questions? Nope. We're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright. Any comment from staff?
No, no comment.
Wow. Any commission discussion?
Let me give you the, the resolution number, which would be nineteen dash five nine eight eight. And then we have a motion from Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Second from Hockes. Let me just make a, a, a quick comment. The analogy that, that, uh, Mr. Johnson brought up regarding, it's kind of like, uh, you know, like a barber shop or a salon. There's, there's Sola Salons, which we have in West Covina, which does that exact same thing. You know, they have space, they lease it out to operators and, you know, they make their money, you know, that way, through the, the tenant that's leasing the space. And, you know, it's, it's a great idea. I really think it's a good idea. And, uh, you know, I'm happy you chose West Covina to, for your, you have a lot of locations, you know, a lot of good areas. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy you came to West Covina. So with that, we'll have a roll call on the motion.
Commissioner Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes.
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Final, let's appeal to the city council within ten days. Welcome, thank you very much and look forward to a successful operation over there. Thank you. Alright. The next item is a non-hearing item, item number six, which is a study session regarding the design review subcommittee guidelines on two-story additions. And I am going to suggest that since Commissioner Hing is not here tonight and she is half of that, you know, team, and also I believe she is the one that requested that we take a look at this. And since there's no, you know, shot clock on this, I think it would be, I would like us to hold this over till a date uncertain or to be determined.
Yeah, we can probably put it on the next agenda. We don't necessarily need to, like, like you said, there's no requirement, there's no applicant, there's no hurry on this. This is just some due diligence for the commission. So we, you don't need to, you don't need to motion anything, we'll just put it on the next agenda.
Great.
If it needs to be held over again, we can hold over again.
Sure.
Till we have the five people.
Fantastic, alright, so that is done, thank you. Wow. Any commission comments or reports? Well, I'll just say something quickly about the Memorial Day event yesterday, I thought it was very, very good. I thought we had a couple of very good speakers. The mayor did a fine job, since he's up there, I'll give him some kudos. And, uh, you know, it's nice to, you know, get everybody out and, uh, you know, for a good cause and recognize the, uh, the veterans that way. Okay, any other comments? Nope, okay. Then, oh, please.
I don't know, maybe I just got a warm fuzzy feeling, um, seeing new businesses opening up in West Covina that is, um, you know, it's just a very encouraging sign. And, um, I'm really glad to see that, uh, our city manager, still interim city manager's here to, to witness that. And, uh, I just remain hopeful that, you know, this trend continues. And, um, I'm saying this especially, you know, for you to hear because, uh, it was part of the reason why I wanted to be on this commission is to be part of the facilitation of, of growing, uh, and, uh, you know, new business, helping new businesses, you know, come into the city and, uh, and setting the stage for West Covina, West Covina being recognized as a, as a business-friendly city. So, that's it.
I concur with that and I, I really think that we're kind of entering a, a renaissance here in this city as far as, you know, we've got Portos, which, you know, is Portos. And, uh, this is still a city where businesses want to come and do business. You know, the location, the, uh, you know, we try and be business-friendly, we have a good, uh, you know, a good diverse cross-section, uh, you know, community here. And, uh, I concur completely with that.
And one more?
Yes.
And maybe that might be, uh, we might have a, a goal for ourselves here to, um, you know, get the recognition for being a great business-friendly city. And, uh, hopefully, like the LA County Economic Development Corporation might, uh, consider West Covina, you know, coming up soon someday to, as a, as a top business-friendly city. I think that would be an admirable goal.
Well, I'll tell you what, we were named that in 2011. The most business-friendly city in LA County or?
Something, I don't know.
Someplace on this block or something, I don't know where.
Could be nice, nice to return to that.
But we had banners up, we had a banner sitting over here for years, long after somebody else had had the thing. But, uh, you know, that was up there and there was banners in the city, so that's a lofty goal that we can certainly, you know, strive for that again too.
Yeah, would love to see that.
Alright, so let's, uh, go to the community development director's report, please.
So we have the forthcoming, which shows items for the June eleventh meeting. So as we just talked about, we held the study session over, but there are some hearing items that we have for that night. So, and then we also right now have some, uh, likely slated for the June twenty-fifth meeting as well. Just to remind you, one of the reasons we give you that forthcoming is to look at those and see if, if, if perchance, some of those are, uh, the locations are close to your houses where you live or where you might own a business or own stock or, I don't know, what, what you guys own. But, uh, if you have a financial interest, then we, we, we give that to you early so you can contact us and we can get you in touch with the city attorney's office in case of a conflict of interest. We need to take those very seriously because lawsuits have been filed when there's, when people have voted and they should have recused themselves. So it is an important, uh, aspect of what we do here and it is one of the reasons we give you that, so you know what's coming up. Lastly, uh, we have the project status report that gives you a list of all the projects the planning commission has approved over the past few years that are still active and where they're at in the process.
I have a, I have a question, believe it or not, on the status report.
Okay.
I noticed that a couple of these are listed as expired now. And one of which I remember well was the rooftop wireless over there at the State of Brothers on Amar and Valinda. And, uh, you know, that was gonna be quite a unique change to the architecture that was in conjunction with that equipment going up there and it's expired, so I guess it's done.
Yes, um, now, keep in mind that sometimes things expire. With the wireless industry, sometimes things expire because they're not keeping their eye on the ball and they could come back. So a good example of that is the Hearst Ranch.
Yeah.
You may remember there was a water tower approved, they were paying rent on it, I think, to Hearst Ranch.
From day one for years, still are.
And then they, it expired, but they came back and submitted and got approval and I think it's under construction.
Oh yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's almost ready to get hot.
So that's a good example of things that sometimes happen in the wireless industry, especially when they're fairly significant costs. So they didn't, they didn't file?
It's almost ready for water.
Yes.
If you remember that night.
Yes, well, let's hope that it doesn't have water in it. So when they expire, it means that they haven't ever submitted an app, uh, a, an extension like the one we had tonight for the parcel map.
Right.
And, uh, that doesn't mean they might not come back sometime in the future and we'll go through the process again.
And another question, everybody is talking on social media and other, other places about what's going on with Chick-fil-A. You know, I mean, I'm just looking at this here, it was approved in December. And here we are, almost six months out from that. And, uh, you know, I mean, can you give us an idea where they're at?
Yes, I can give you a little bit of a rundown on that. First of all, keep in mind that for new construction, six months is not that long a timeframe. I think people get, have an unrealistic idea of how long it takes to go through that. And even with a company like Chick-fil-A, there's, there's, there's points they have to tick off. Having said that, they're very close to moving forward. I believe that you may start seeing activity there in the next month. And they have let us know recently that they're thinking that they will be opening the first quarter of next year.
Okay. You know, part of it is too, is that there's no signage over there at all. There's no indication that it's?
No, there's no signage. And the other odd thing to me is that they've left the building up that whole time. So I don't understand, as, as you, you, you all know, I believe, there's a property owner-tenant relationship that has nothing to do with the city. We're not invited into the room, we don't know what that is about, but there's something different about that and it's just part of their process that they're, I don't think there's been any problems. Chick-fil-A has not expressed a problem and they've been going through the process with us the whole time. And as I said, they, they have told us recently that they expect to start moving forward in June. So, uh, I expect you're gonna see some bulldozers and people with hammers knocking things down soon.
You know, if it, if it weren't, if it weren't for social media, you know, I mean, things get, somebody put on there today on Facebook that, um, gosh, I hope they're gonna fix that leaky roof in that building. So I made a comment, they're gonna demo the building. Don't worry about the, the roof. Ain't gonna be there, the building won't be gone. You know, but this is how, you know? So I mean, as soon as, it's like, kind of like Portos, as soon as you start seeing activity of something, they start demoing that building or they put a sign up coming soon or whatever, they're, oh, I guess it is coming. You know, but until then, it's rumor time.
Yeah. I, I think in, in general, I would say smaller projects usually take about six to eight months to go through a plan check process. That a lot depends on how organized this, this system is or the people who are submitting, which Chick-fil-A is pretty organized. Larger projects may take a year or two. I think good, good examples of that are the Merrill Gardens project and the, uh, the fifteen thirty Cameron housing project. Both that, those, they're basically just starting now and they were approved almost two years ago.
By the way, the Merrill Gardens, they were working on that yesterday on Memorial Day. Because when I drove over here to go to the event over here, they were guys up on that scaffolding. That was a good payday for them, I would think. Okay, city council action, if any?
FYI, I'm, I'm not gonna be here June twenty-fifth, doesn't look like so.
Okay.
Just a heads up.
Thank you for letting us know that. I'm sorry, what was the question? Oh, city council. The zone change, I don't remember if I mentioned that to you before. The zone change on Pacific Lane that came before the planning commission earlier this year was approved and then they had their second reading at the last meeting, so that has been completely finalized. I think that's the last thing that, action that planning, or that city council took of a planning commission item.
We're at the end of the agenda. Any objection to adjournment? Nope, we're adjourned.